Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Cordova?
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Councilmember Peralta?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Beeta?
Here.
We do have a quorum. We can, uh...
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to come out of recess.
Okay, there's a motion.
A second, Ed.
And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have, uh, item number three, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agendas presented? There's two items that were continued from the regular meeting.
Rule for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll go to matters from staff. Item A, discussion and possible approval of joint powers agreement between the Town of Taos, Taos County, Village of Cuesta, Village of Taoski Valley for consolidated dispatch services. Oscar.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, good morning. Members of the council. We have a lot of work to do today. I think, once we get into it, you'll, uh... You'll be thankful that you, uh... Instead of treating, dealing with this, uh, last Tuesday night, that you set aside some time, special time, just to focus on this. What I'd like to do, with your permission, is to first start out with just a presentation about, uh, current operations there.
Oscar, before you go out, continue. I'd like to welcome, uh, members from our dispatch, uh, members from Taos County, and also, uh, Marty Grego, uh, from, uh, Rio Reba, Rio Reba County. Welcome to our meeting.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. I invited Ms. Grego to come here, um, because she is on the executive board of the 911 Association for the State. And so, for those of us in Taos, or those 911 centers that are in northern New Mexico, we're sort of represented by her, if you will, on that 911 board. Uh, this is the board that advises, uh, the Department of Finance and Administration, DFA, which then manages the, uh, the grants that we apply to and who pays our teleph- big telephony bills. So, I just thought it was important for her to, to hear this. We are being talked a lot about because of, uh, the, you know, the situation we're in in Taos, and I just thought it would be, uh, important for, uh, a member of that board to, to listen in to the conversation and be informed firsthand of how things are going here. Of course, she's also an expert. She's been the, uh, the director of the 911 authority in Rio Reba now for some 15 years, 17 years. And so, uh, obviously, if you have any technical questions that, that we won't be able to handle, uh, she, I'm sure she'll be able to handle it. Uh, anyway, uh, so, uh, what I'd like to do, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, with your permission, is start out with a presentation about current operations. Uh, and so, I've asked Abigail to prepare, uh, for that, a financial report of how things are. And the reason I, I wanted to talk to you about that is because, um, um, we... Something you've heard from me now for, for some time, um, I shared this as well with the county commissioners, uh, last month, and that is that, um, we are now at the, at the stage in, in, uh, operations over there, uh, having consolidated the relocation. We're now at the point where we need to take the next steps for the long term. That is, um, uh, put in place the necessary, uh, new practices and procedures, uh, get the staff used to operating from there and operating, uh, in a different fashion. And that also will involve, uh, naming, uh, a director. We have, um, advertised that position now a couple of times, actually, once in the springtime, and then again, uh, the last couple of months. And, um, the response we've gotten the last couple of months has been a lot more muted than it was even in the springtime, precisely because people, uh, understand that we are in a, in a transition and, and, um, there are a lot of things that need to be decided, uh, with 911 in Taos before, um, that things are on a permanent basis. And so, as you can imagine, the people that would apply, would be interested, look at that, and at this point, we're, uh, we're seeing, uh, we think that they're shying away just because of those, because of that uncertainty, uh, which makes, uh, puts a lot of burden on us, uh, because, as you know, right now, we don't have a, uh, a full-time director, and the person who's serving as a, as a part-time director is, uh, is not an expert by any means in 911. And so, uh, we're basically trying to keep things together, uh, before we go into transition. Uh, on top of that, um, um, we've had a, uh, a decision by the, the county, one of our partners, to just unilaterally pull back some $80,000, uh, unexplained why, um, eighty, pull back $80,000 from what they had committed to, uh, put into the, into the, the partnership last spring. Uh, and so, uh, that's making things a lot harder because, uh, obviously, the, uh, the resources that we were counting on to hire the executive director and make the changes and, and, and move forward over there, uh, we don't, we can't count on it. Uh, not to mention that it just puts in, in great limbo, if you will, puts in great limbo where we are with operations over there. Uh, we, of course, like everybody else, have been, have been, uh, hearing and following closely the, the county's plans to, uh, create a new center. So, the, the idea that, that we would be going forward here, you know, and then, and then, um, there could be, in essence, um, a, a reduction in, um, in, in workload or a big change in the workload, and a change in the way we do business, of course, uh, makes this, makes it very hard to, to plan for. And so, um, what I, what I wanted to do is then, uh, just give you full, um, a- as you take up the, uh, the joint partnership agreements, um, later on in, in the discussion, I want to give you, as a backdrop, that situation, so that we're in a very critical situation. We've been sort of in transition now, um, for far too long, and, and, um, my strong recommendation to you is to, is to get us out of that transition now. Uh, this is 911. It's not like we're paving a road. It's not like we're building something that, you know, can stay half-done. This is 911, the perhaps the most critical piece of, of all public, uh, our entire public safety apparatus out there. If this doesn't work well, uh, you know, we, we can't expect that our fire and our police and our ambulance services out there are gonna, are gonna be much better. So, anyway, I, with that, what I'd like to do is just, just turn it over to our, our acting, part-time director of 911, Abigail Adame, to, uh, run over the, uh, how we're doing with our budget.
Oscar, uh, before we, uh, proceed on the, um, the amount that was pulled back, I understand that, um, $371,000 was the amount presented at their budget hearings and our budget hearings?
Yes.
And confirmed. I see, I see email confirmation that that is, in fact, the budget amount. Um, apparently, they pulled back 80,000 and reverted back to the previous year's amount. I called, uh, Commissioner Barone, and he couldn't recall the amount that was, uh, that was budgeted, but he said whatever is in the budget that we approved is the amount they were going to commit. So, we're, we're, uh, I guess it concerns me that we do have email correspondence confirming that, in fact, that is the amount that was approved, and the, the county has been in arrears since then because they're only paying the amount from, from previous without...
Yes.
There's no explanation why, how they got to that, and we approved our budget based on their commitment.
Yes.
And their, uh, their confirmed commitment to, to that 371 and not the 280,000. So, has, has any discussions, uh, been made as to showing the actual documentation of why we based our budget around that? And where is that going?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I have, um, had that conversation, so has, um, Ms. Adame. Um, and, and we've got some of that in writing, both the commitment, um, back in the spring, um, you know, confirming that $371,000, which is the amount that we, uh, we presented to the stakeholders with the county staff present, uh, we heard no protest at that time. I know there was, uh, at least one meeting where I was present. You were there, I believe, Councilman Peralta was there, Commissioner Barone, and Commissioner Romero were there, uh, were, where we were told, "Look, uh, we're gonna put aside $371,000." And, uh, and we went forward with that. Later on, uh, we got email con- you know, in writing confirmation about that. Uh, we thought we were going forward with that. Uh, of course, had that not been the case, we, you would be, you would be seeing a very different budget here. Uh, but anyway, uh, a month later, uh, this was in, uh, in June, after our budget went into place, uh, I was told verbally by the assistant county manager that, in fact, no, it was gonna be $285,000. Now, we, we right away went to, asked, um, as a matter of, uh, public record, we asked for copies of the budget that the county had put in, and, uh, what we saw was a budget of not $371,000, but $540,000. So, they budgeted that, but the response that we got then was, uh, just simply because they budgeted, doesn't, you know, did not necessarily mean that they, uh, had to give it to us or, uh, put it into the partnership. So, we're very confused about that, and, and, uh, part of, of the confusion here is, it's not just, you know, that they're pulling back the $80,000, but what does that mean really for the county's, uh, participation in this partnership? Obviously, if this, uh, is sort of presages, or this is an announcement that, that they are, in fact, gonna step back and go their own way, well, that's very concerning. We're gonna have to quickly make adjustments to, uh, to the personnel and to the budgets that we have over there, taking that into account. And so, um, that's the other thing we, uh, that we wanna put it, put up here now. So, uh, what Ms. Adame's gonna go over with you is, is, uh, the, the projections, but also, uh, in the, in the, in the backup that you have there. You have, uh, documents that were presented, uh, both to the stakeholders and to the county, um, to the, to the county manager, to the assistant county manager, to the county commission, et cetera. And so, anyway, uh, if we could just, uh, move forward with that.
Thank you, Oscar. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council. Um, just to piggyback on that, just to add clarification, because I think I had sent an explanation to you, Mr. Mayor, um, a couple of months ago, but not necessarily to the council. So, in your packet, you'll see, um, an email from our finance director, Marietta Fambro, and that was an email with an attachment of the actual budget that was presented to the stakeholders on April 25th. So, she sent me that, um, on April 24th. Then you also have the agenda for the, um, April 25th stakeholders, um, meeting, and on that agenda, we had the final jud- um, budget as a presentation. And I also have attached the, um, sign-in sheet for that meeting, and, um, Mr. Rick Bellis, deputy county manager, um, signed that he was in attendance on April 25th. At that meeting, I did present the budget that I have included in your packet as well, and that was the amount of, um, that Oscar's, um, discussed, the 371,896 per entity.
So, for this upcoming year, the Town of Taos is paying pursuant to the current JPA we're under, we're paying an equal share?
Yes.
The, uh, the county has 371?
Yes.
And because they pulled back, we're, in fact, now subordinating the majority of operations, of course?
Well, well, uh, there's, there's two ways, and that's part of, part of what has to be decided here. Uh, one is, um, if we decide then to just make up that difference on our own, I mean, obviously, that can happen. Uh, but the other is that we would decide to then deduct that, what the county owes from the, from the ending balance. Uh, there's about a hundred and, almost, a little bit more than $100,000 in the ending balance. Uh, Abigail will, uh, go over that in just, just a little bit...
Not to date. To date, we have about $75,000 in the ending balance, and that is because, um, we haven't received, um, the entire pay- we haven't received any payment from the Village of Cuesta, and we have not received the agreed-upon amount from Taos County.
So, uh, I was speaking more from what's budgeted, but, uh, whatever is in that ending balance, uh, we would, we were estimating at the end, if everything were to go accordingly, um, according to plan, if we would get some, a little bit more than $100,000. So, the, the idea is then that we, uh, we own half of that, and so, the county owns half of that. So, I guess the other way to approach this would be that we would just deduct from the county's part what, you know, is in arrears. But obviously, that, what's in arre- what, what they're in arrears for at, at $80,000, if they follow through with that all year, what's in arrears is greater than what would, you know, than their portion of the ending balance. And so, yes, at some point, um, if we don't scale back operations, then the only way we would be able to keep it at the level that it's at right now is that if we made the differ- made up the difference.
Okay, so, ha- why hasn't Cuesta, under the current JPA, uh, you had the stakeholder meeting, why hasn't Cuesta or Ski Valley paid?
Um, Ski Valley, we did receive a payment from them, um, sometime last week, in the amount of $5,200 and, um, some change. They did, um, catch up essentially with what they were behind. Um, the Village of Cuesta, I can't speak for them. I did contact the, um, manager directly and let him know that he had to, um, um, thank you, that we were expecting payment, uh, not only on the agreed amount for the current fiscal year, but also a couple of, um, fiscal years back. I think it's 2003, 2004, if I recall correctly. They have an outstanding balance of about $5,500. And I also reminded him that that needed to get paid. Um, and he said that he was gonna speak to his finance department. We followed up since and have not heard from them. Um, and then, so just to complete, um, what I have in, in the packet, I also have that email from county manager, county manager Rick Bellis, or deputy county manager, saying that, um, "Per your question this morning at the stakeholders' meeting, it is in the budget that was presented and will go to the DFA as our draft." So, I had followed up after our meeting in April, um, a couple of times with both the county manager and the deputy county manager, asking that if, in fact, they had agreed to that amount and were gonna present that to their commission. And both of them had verbally stated yes, but I did ask, um, uh, the deputy manager at a stakeholders' meeting if that was still accurate, and he followed up by in writing saying that it was.
No.
So, which is why we proceeded to present that budget to the council.
And I have, I have the sign-in sheet. He was, in fact, at the stakeholders' meetings.
Yes.
As well. Now, uh, what's not in here is, uh, correspondence we got from, uh, then, uh, county attorney, Barbara Martinez. Uh, this is, this is subsequent to, uh, the, the budget going in. So, in June, uh, we, um, got verbal indication anyway that, that they were only gonna pay the same amount that they paid the previous year. Um, we asked, um, you know, for them to explain that, and so, what we got from the, uh, then county manager, county, uh, attorney, Barbara Martinez, was that, "Well, um, uh, that's what they had budgeted, and that's, in essence, that's all that they were going to pay, period." And so, that, that's, that's the status quo, uh, that we're in, uh, in right now. Anyway, uh, Abigail, if you'll just run through, um, the budget, where it stands right now, and, um, just highlighting the impact that that $80,000 will do to operations?
So, Oscar, I see that email from the county's legal staff, and it says that the county does not have a budget line item for dis- dispatch services?
Yes, uh, um, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. What we did, even after Ms. Martinez was gone, we, uh, asked, uh, as a matter of, of public record, for a copy of their budget. And what they sent us was that, that big line item that you see there, that's $540,000.
They have it titled under central communications.
Under central communications. Now, they said, uh, what they're telling us there is that there is no specific line item, you know, paying the town. Um, and so, they just sort of put that, that, uh, $540,000 in a, in a general line item, and, um, it would be from there, I guess, if they would pay into the partnership. And so, um, with that, they're saying that's, that's all the information they have. They're not gonna give us any more information. There's no more information to, to provide.
And in my conversation with the chairman and, well, in various meetings, I think Councilmember Peralta, uh, was there, a couple of them, the manager was very adamant that he could not go over the 371 for this upcoming year, and that a new JPA would have to be based at 371 cap for a couple of years until a board would be formed and then create a budget based on call volume, et cetera. But it was confirmed to me that, because preliminary numbers as to what it would truly cost to operate, the numbers were quite, uh, much higher. And, uh, understanding that we wanted to hire an, an executive director, which dispatch has never had, uh, they committed to that amount, and he assured me that that was gonna be the amount. I'm, I'm just puzzled that they would just unilaterally pull it. Okay.
All right, um, so, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, um, we...
You might have hit the switch on top.
There you go. I saw your hand.
Okay. Um, so, we have, um, approximately a savings of $32,271, um, in the personnel budget, and that's due to not hiring, um, full-time executive director. However, we, um, are in need of a budget adjustment to, um, to offset some of the recent purchases that need to be paid for, recent purchases that we're contemplating, and that's, um, a few of the, um, office supplies we have discussed. Oscar, a sleuth upgrade as well that is needed. Um, we have held off on that for quite some time now because...
Sleuth, if you'll just explain what sleuth is.
Okay, the sleuth, um, is, is a system that's used in, from our, um, dispatchers, and it's shared between the officers and the, um, the PD and our dispatcher. So, the information that's, um, on there on an individual is then also, it's information that our dispatchers can pull up, and it's just basically their criminal activity, um, that's in there, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a database, uh, management software, um, that our police are able to use.
It's exactly database, yes. Um, so, our police department is in need of an upgrade to the, the sleuth, um, as well, and we've been holding on that because if we do merge with the, um, county, we all wanna be on the same system so that we're able to speak one ano- uh, with one another over the database. Um, so, if we do move forward with that, we also have to, um, accommodate for that expense, and that's in the neighborhood of about, I think, $16,000. Okay. And, um, just to go back a little bit, uh, if you wanna go into the Town of Taos municipal budget fiscal year 2013, 2014, um, sheet, if the, if every entity, um, Town of Taos, Taos County, Village of Cuesta, and Ski Valley paid the amount that was agreed to and that is budgeted, um, we should have, at the end of the year, a, a budget of, uh, in our cash reserves, $109,406. If we don't receive that from, um, from the county, and I just did the numbers for the, the county, assuming that the Village of Cuesta and Ski Valley are gonna pay, and I, um, focus more on Taos County because it's the, that will have the largest impact to our budget, we're looking at our reserves having an ending balance of $19,459.
Great, um, and I just noticed, uh, our, the deputy manager of the county just walked in, "Welcome to our meeting." Um, we were just, uh, speaking about the, um, the budget, uh, budget concerns that, um, the county has pulled back from 371 down to 285, uh, despite numerous commitments and emails, correspondence, and, you know, when we, when we have these meetings, when we're preparing budgets on both sides, you meet so you can establish an upcoming budget. The budget was established, agreed upon. Uh, is there a reason why the county has pulled that back? Do you have any explanation? Are we gonna expect that?
No, the misunderstanding I have about meeting, uh, here at that late, uh, where the 371 was discussed, was that that wasn't agreed-upon budget if there was a JPA and the other conditions were agreed to. Um, but we budgeted for the 371, and I think that's the email you're talking about, is Abigail had inquired of me, "Had we put the money in the budget?" And yes, we did put it in the budget, but, um, the county believes that there was no agreement beyond that. It was in anticipation of a JPA.
Well, I, I, I think that there's a serious mis- misunderstanding there because the new JPA has been talked about for quite some time, and a new JPA would then put the town at 45%, 55%. And the, the talk on this upcoming year was 371, 371, under the current JPA, that the town and the county pay the same amount. So, I think it was very clear that 371 was the number for this upcoming fiscal year under the old JPA and not under the new JPA. Uh, you know, that's coming from your manager, that's coming from the chairman. Uh, based on everything that I see here, correspondence, the presentation, because if it was assuming that it was a neat new JPA, then the cou- the town's portion would be 45%. Uh, and it's not, it's 371. That's what the agreed-upon number was. So, I mean, it's clear, clear that it wasn't assuming the new JPA. Now, the new JPA provisions was, and that was being discussed, is the county wanted to be kept at that 371, and, uh, that, that, that was, that was discussed. Now, under this new JPA, I just, I just can't understand, I mean, it's clear that there was a miscommunication, and, I mean, we're clear as to what we, on this upcoming budget because it was presented, and there's email confirmations, uh, and verbal conversations. Is the county, I mean, 'cause right now, we're, we're paying probably 65% of operations. I mean, uh, and, and clearly, we, we needed to hire an executive director, and that was agreed upon by all the stakeholders. Is the county willing to make good on the 371? Or, I mean, can you see where we're, where we're, where we're coming from?
Uh, I can, Mayor, but the difficulty is that, uh, throughout the negotiations, and I've heard you say it from the side yourself, that, uh, different people, different parties are negotiating different things at different levels, and, uh, you know, it's constantly trying to hit a voting target. So, it's a question, you know, is it, as you say, the 55% or is it the 75, 25? And is that a real offer, or is that a not-real offer? Um, and I, I think the difficulty with this negotiation for both sides is that multiple parties have been involved in it at different levels. Uh, I think with the best of intentions, people have been trying to find, uh, a resolution, but the two or three core, uh, concerns seem to always be, uh, left to last, and when we get to those, everything falls apart and we start over with something else. But I understand your concern, and again, I had received, uh, requests for clarification from the, uh, town manager and, uh, Abigail, and I spoke to everyone who was in the room that day, and, uh, uh, they believe that was a number that was thrown out in good faith toward a, uh, negotiation that would result in a final agreement.
So, but you're, you're aware of the, this upcoming, uh, this current fiscal year's budget, correct?
I am.
Yeah, and the numbers that are in there is 371, 371?
Well, you know, again, I attend all the stakeholders' meetings, and I don't ever remember a group agreeing on that, or the 7% increase, or actually having been given a budget. What tends to happen is...
You weren't given a budget?
We attend those meetings, and then we're told this is what's gonna happen.
Can you come, can you come forward? Sorry, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry about that. You know, as we've discussed in this room before, part of the difficulty in the stakeholders' concept is that the people that come to the meeting tend to be, um, first responders, so they have an interest in the service, but they don't necessarily have the authority to negotiate on behalf of the governmental entity that they're representing. So, I believe part of the misunderstandings come from information being conveyed by the town to the stakeholders at that meeting, and the fire chief, Cuesta, or the public safety director for Ski Valley, it ends right there. I mean, I have no idea, and I don't think you do, whether they ever take it back to their governing bodies, and limited negotiations or discussions I've had with the, uh, mayors of, and administrators of both those entities indicate, no, those, you know, if you presented us a budget for 371 for the coming year, it never got back to those governing bodies. Now, I don't know whether the town manager, I believe he did have meetings with both Cuesta and Ski Valley, proposed that to them, and at some point, they accepted it. But the perception by the county and the other two partners is, "We're told this is the way it's going to be." And that was the case with the 7% increase. Um, and I believe there's in your, your resolution, which actually disbands the, uh, in, in February, the JPA actually makes reference to that, that you would charge the 7%, and if everybody didn't pay it, then you could end it sooner. It's kind of tough to negotiate with yourself, and I, I've heard representatives of the town say that, and I think representatives of the other parties feel that way.
Yeah, and we've been negotiating two different things. Uh, one's a new JPA, and you're right, there's a lot of discussion going on, and we get mixed messages because a certain side of the commission is going one way, and then a certain side is going the other way. But as far as the current JPA, under the current terms, I believe that it was very clear, I mean, the, you know, we needed to hire everybody in the room at the stakeholders' meeting, and, and yes, everything that happens at the stakeholders' meeting, at least on our part, comes back to the governing body because we wanna know what's going on, and I'm kinda concerned that nobody else takes that stakeholder meeting to their governing body or, or the results. What is the purpose of a stakeholder meeting if, if that's what's going on? But, you know, I guess we're, we're just really concerned that, um, that we, uh, for 15 years or whatever amount, um, the current JPA has been in existence, no increase whatsoever has been to the budget, and pretty much the town has been absorbing. Uh, and the, the need for a new director is what required the budget adjustments that was agreed to. Uh, we presented those to the, to the county at those stakeholders' meetings, and it's concerning that that didn't get to the governing body to approve. Of course, they approved $540,000. Uh, that's what we understand they approved total, and that they would go back to revert to another, an amount that forces the town now to subordinate the rest, so... forces the town now to subordinate the rest, so.
Well, with due respect, Mayor, I, you know, I haven't been here very long, but in the, I've been in part with Adam Baker and then Jacob Caldwell, the discussions, and when the budgets came up, at least two of those years, we've always had a reserve. In fact, that's how we, both parties, the town and the county, agreed to not increase it. It wasn't unilateral decision. I will say, the county and the town made that decision for the other parties, and it was to apply money in the reserve to meet those additional expenses that were being projected in the budget. And you are absolutely correct about the director. And that's the one thing I'm clear about, is that both before and during the meeting at which the town manager appeared, the position of the county was, the JPA allows you the power to run it any way you want, so if you felt you needed a director, then you had the authority to do that without actually consulting any of the parties to the JPA.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, just to conclude the presentation on the, also in your packet is the current budget, thirteen fourteen, and the proposed budget, and if we go, we have included some of the utility increases in that budget that yields an increase to the projected budget for fourteen fifteen, and also a full-time director. We have removed a dispatch position from that budget, thinking that an executive director, when that person is selected, can then make the argument whether an additional dispatcher is needed. So with that, we would start off the budget in the negative of forty-two thousand for fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
So, just if I may, just underscore to you what all this means operationally. Without that eighty thousand dollars, we can't afford to hire an executive director. So operations are continue as it is right, continue as it is right now, and in fact, should there be vacancies in the future, then it'll be a very difficult decision to fill them or not, or to come back to you to ask the, you to authorize the town pay more than that half, fifty percent of the, of the budget for that.
Well, that's not an option. I mean, this is public health, safety, welfare, that's not an option not to fill those positions or come back. We have to find it somewhere else. That's just the bottom line. I mean, we're not going to cut public health, safety, and welfare, and nine-one-one, we just, you can't do that. Now, you know, the county to pull back that amount, knowing that, I mean, you know, you just don't arbitrarily cut it, cut a number, you have to look at how are we affecting services? And we need to make sure that we keep that funded, so.
So anyway, that concludes our, our financial, or our budget presentation. We are, it's clear we are in some dire straits.
Councilmember Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question, and that is, Abigail, on, on your, on the makeup of, of the communications center, you have three different shifts, and one shift has a vacant position halftime over the other two shifts, I'm assuming. What is the breakdown of when those shifts start, and what, what part of the day do each one of these shifts and supervisors handle?
So we have three shifts, six AM to two PM, a two PM to ten PM, and a ten PM to six AM. And we have a, we had initially, when we did the initial presentation to the council, highlighting what we called the SWOT, highlighting these strengths and weaknesses of the department, one of the weaknesses that we highlighted is that we didn't have a shift supervisor, or a supervisor per shift. We did later ensure that each shift did have a supervisor, and that has since changed. We are down now to two supervisors. So we have a day supervisor from eight to five, and then we have a supervisor on the night shift from ten to six AM.
Okay. So based on your, on your tree here, that, that first group of communications people are the two to, I mean, the six to two group? Okay, which is your heaviest load?
Yes, our night shift seems to be the slowest and the heaviest, is what they call the swing shift from two to ten PM.
Okay, which would be the...
So it changes, sometimes they say they're busiest in the morning, in the morning, from six to two PM, and then they do have a little shuffle between two PM and, I mean, two PM to ten PM. So yes, day shift being the busiest.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand where, I mean, during the operations, when we're, have the most volume, and when we have to consider, you know, having the most people, that's all I'm asking, and so...
Yeah.
The way you have your shifts, there's a little bit of a crossover between two shifts as, as far as volume is concerned, and that's in the tate-dime period, so the early shift coming in picks up some of that volume, and then the later shift picks up some of that volume, so that you don't stress out one shift over another.
Right.
Thank you.
If I may just add to that a little bit, this year, is the first year we actually had a supervisor for each of the shifts. I, let me say that again, I mean, it's an incredible thing to say. Previously, there was only one supervisor, period, for the entire operation.
From eight to five.
From eight to five, and that was Shirley Luhan. And so, two of those shifts sort of were operated without a supervisor. Last year, we changed that, we named some supervisors that increased the budget a little bit. And so, even, even what you see now is, is a, is a new change. And so, if I may, Mr. Mayor, then continue with the rest of staff's recommendations. Because of, of where we are in operations, decisions have to be made there to, to move forward. And because of where we are, where we are just in the transition, where we have been really in a holding pattern now for, for the better part of a year, I want to underscore to you that we are at a very critical juncture here with regards to nine-one-one, and where I would recommend to you strongly that we not continue in that pattern. We are not putting the best foot forward for this very critical service. If we do, we, we need to get out of this transition. To think that we're going to be doing this now for quite, you know, for a few more months is, is not the best course for public safety. And so as we go forward with, in discussing how we, proposals that we would proffer to the, to the county, I would want to just make sure that's clear as, as the setting, or clear in terms of what frames the discussion. We need to get out of the transition, the holding pattern we've been in for a better part of a year. We need to make very critical decisions here so that that service is everything that it should be, which is the critical link in our public safety apparatus. As I see it, and this is something I've shared with you individually, as well as I've put in writing, as I see it, that we have four options here that are available to us in terms of how we proceed. Not necessarily the, the joint powers agreement, versions of joint powers agreements, but really four different told directions, as I see it. One is to continue as we have been right now, to assume that the negotiations, as they have been proceeding with the MOU right now, will prove fruitful and just, you know, play that out until the very last day. The other option is to announce to the county that simply we are pushing back the date for termination, you know, by months, by years, so that we can all stay in the JPA, the two thousand eight JPA, you know, and that does keep us in the JPA. By the way, we are in the JPA, we, we operate with our partners via this agreement, such as it is. The third option is that we would approve a new JPA as best as we can here. I would urge us to, to whatever, if we do take that route, for it to be a unanimous, you know, vote going forward, so that the, the county, the community can see, at least on this side, unity in, in direction and, and conviction in that direction. Or still, there's a, there's a fourth option, that is, that we change the way we have been negotiating up until now, which is, as Mr. Bellis correctly pointed out, it's been happening very scattershot, the different people are negotiating different sorts of things, and as well as we ask the lawyers themselves to try and resolve it. And I would say that we would just have to change it very radically, maybe, you know, one of those situations where policymakers would meet with other policymakers, maybe facilitated by a mediator or facilitator, someone that the community respects, and that the commitment be that people don't leave the room until an agreement is struck. So we have four of those options. One of those options, I, I recommend that we just accept that it didn't work out, and that is to continue as we have been going up until now. The MOU that we, that we got into provided us a very small window of opportunity there to reach an agreement. It was, it was sort of taken really as a general statement that we were going to agree to, to negotiate things, but that memorandum of understanding did not provide all, it's clear now, that, very clear now, that it did not provide all of the, the guidance, all of the, the parameters, if you will, for us reaching a joint partner, an acceptable JPA. There's a lot of parts in that MOU that are internally contradictory, you know, that things just don't work out, and it also doesn't say anything at all about areas that the parties have, have big disagreements. For example, the composition of the board, the JPA, excuse me, the MOU speaks, says nothing about the composition of the board. And the other thing that the MOU did is that it said that the people who were going to negotiate this were going to be the lawyers. While there were very many, a number of critical business decisions, not matters of law, not matters of styling a contract, but very critical business decisions that had to be resolved in order for the lawyers to be able to, to proceed. But nonetheless, the MOU said that, well, only the lawyers can negotiate. And so, anyway, that, that has not, that has not proven, and I, I'm convinced at this point that that will not prove successful at the very end. We are going to arrive at the end of this MOU period without a joint part, an acceptable JPA, and in the meantime, we will all be still in the holding pattern, in transition, and the nine-one-one service suffering for that. The, the, the option of, of keeping us at least, keeping us together at least in the current JPA, I think under all the other certainties, is an option that I would urge us to consider here, and that is to just sort of accept that the conditions at this point are not right, for whatever reason, for us to reach a JPA, and so rather than, than step back, et cetera, that we would just say, okay, let's just keep a, stay in the current JPA and, and maybe bring this up again when those conditions are improved. Anyway, what you have, we've been sending back and forth, or actually, what you asked the staff to prepare were a number of, of different versions of the JPA. I provided you a summary and sort of a cross comparison of each one of those. In essence, you've got, if you will, two general versions. One is, I've labeled it the two thousand twelve version, and that's the version that's been circulating for some time.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Oscar, rather than you getting into it, let us get into it?
Yes.
I would appreciate that better, and then you can make your recommendations afterwards.
Yeah. We, we, councilmember Peralta had offered amendments to a JP that circulated and then different discussions, so councilmember Peralta, do you want to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to come down here because I feel better talking to you face-to-face than, than side-to-side. I'm going to try to globalize this a little bit, I guess, is maybe what I'm talking about here before we actually get into the discussion of this one, and it'll take just a couple of minutes. In reviewing the, the JPA, I'm sorry, in reviewing the MOU and reviewing the San Juan version of the JPA, and now looking at the Rio Reba County version of the JPA that they have, there's, there's a few things that stand out, but more importantly than that is the idea that there may be a few different solutions to, to our position that could be possibly presented to the county, and that's the reason that you see a number of different JPAs before you, because I think all of them have, have merit and possibly have the concerns of the, of the council in them that could possibly, with a few amendments to them, provide something. But let me talk a little bit, first of all, about the San Juan JPA. The two thousand six San Juan JPA really is a total county-controlled JPA, and the reason for that is because it pertains to the nine-one-one tax, which is a county tax that is imposed by the county, and the county, because it is a county revenue, is obligated to ensure that it's spent properly, and that's the reason that the county is the fiscal agent for it, and the employees are the county. And if you look at the board makeup, it really leans towards county-type of, of entities to the majority. The partners to that being municipalities in, in the Four Corners area are kind of secondary to that in the sense that what they're there for is to recommend to the board the needs of their entities to the, and then that goes to the county, because the county controls the budget for that, and, and everything else that goes with that. So that's basically what the JPA for San Juan County is. Because we don't have that tax in place here in Taos, or Taos County, the, the options that we have have to be a little bit more understanding of the players involved and the fact that all of us have a budget requirement to make this operation work. And therefore, you have some modifications to, to that JPA in the sense of how each member of the authority is going to participate. So the first JPA you have before you is, what I did is I took the basic parts of the MOU that really had to do with the JPA and put them in here. Everything else is left out, and that is, if there is no JPA, what happens? All of that stuff has nothing to do with the JPA, so therefore, it's not in here. So if, if we don't go there and the county decides they want to go their own way, that's not in here because that has nothing to do with the JPA. So what we're looking at here is basically four areas that we need to talk about that aren't boilerplate, and that is location, and that is budget, and that is the makeup of the board going forward. So you're, if you have before you, is it here, or?
Are you going to tell the difference?
Which is which?
Yeah, that's what we're trying, it seems like it's the same one.
I want to make sure you guys will get the same one that I have.
Abigail, you just gave us documents that have two.
So what was printed out real is what Brian James sent to the council on Friday, and there were three conferences, and then he sent by Oscar on, I believe, Friday or Saturday.
Mr. Mayor, do you all have your iPads?
Yeah.
Okay, if you go to the agenda for today, and in there, there is a JPA, the first item?
So the agenda packet has been populated?
Yes.
With these documents?
No, no, this, the only thing in there right now, there's three things in there, is the MOU, the San Juan JPA, and then the JPA that I constructed. So the first item in there is the JPA that I constructed. So if you look at that, that's without any amendments to it or anything else. And I would like to discuss that as it is, and then take into consideration amendments to it.
On the agenda link on the first item?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if we're talking with regards to Councilmember Peralta's proposed JPA, section two, which is the Board of Directors, which is board members, still weighs heavily on weighted voting, and, I mean, I think we've, something that I've mentioned all along that I could not support. So I think maybe that's a good starting point to start dissecting, I mean, with regards to, I mean, because that's, for me, that's one of the biggest issues, is the Board of Directors, and its makeup, and then I'm looking at your additional amendments.
I understand that, but what I would like to do is give you what's in there, and then let's talk about any changes that the council would like to make. And I understand the concern about weighted voting and that sort of thing, and so, it's just, here's what I did originally. I did make an adjustment on the board, and I know that others have done the same thing. So if I could just give you what's here, and then let's talk about it, and see whether it's acceptable.
What exact attachment are you looking for, JPA?
The first JPA, no, the first one.
First, the JPA on the link of the agenda?
It's the number one JPA.
For today?
Yes.
It's the number one JPA, it's the JPA, okay.
Okay. And this other one here, I believe, is amended.
Okay, so I do want to make sure we're all looking at the same document.
What it is, is you have Councilmember Peralta's proposed JPA. What we have in hand is some amendments to that, and then we have the San Juan JPA directly as approved by San Juan.
Mr. Mayor. And another one?
Yeah, with some modifications.
So, let me finish my presentation, and then we'll get into discussion. By the way, before I do that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that this JPA be put into discussion, so I make a motion that we accept this JPA, and I'd like a second to that, so we can discuss it and we can amend it.
Okay, so for discussion purpose?
It's not to approve it, just for discussion.
To enter this JPA into the record. So there's a motion to enter this JPA into the record?
I can second that, Mr. Mayor.
Second, under discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I could, the first section in there, 1.5, that you need to look at, and this is taken from the MOU concerning the makeup of the budget, as in the MOU, there's no variations to that, this is the way it is, with one caveat, and that's at the very end, and that is, if you look at the last sentence, it says, "The Authority Board can, if it so needs to, adjust the budget in the first two years upward or downward, depending upon the need for, to carry out the duties and responsibilities of the JPA as the Board determines those responsibilities." Now, the caveat to this is because this is not a sole source revenue stream, but comes from the Authority's entities, that would have to go back to the entities for approval. So the Authority has the ability to propose a budget, but the Authorities have the final say-so about whether, I mean, the entities had the final say-so as to what that budget's going to be, because it's all based upon our ability within our own entities to say whether or not we have the budget to make that work or not. So that's the difference there. The second one is item 2.1, which is the makeup of the board. Now, this original makeup was that the Board would have the full authority to make its representatives from anywhere that they wished to. Could be the Police Department, or the Sheriff's Department, or the Fire Department, or County Commissioners, or City Councils, or Managers, or anybody. That's how this was done. And because the budget in this one is forty, forty, I'm sorry, I'll go back, I'll have to go back and look at the numbers on this that we put in there. But what it does then is that if, since the county, according to this, JPA would be putting more money into it than anyone else, I did put a little bit of a weight in there by having them have three, two, one, and one, with a total membership of seven. That is the original thought at that time, but I understand that there may be some interest in doing something different. Now, the next item in here is 5.1, which is the location of the 911 center. And this is according to the JPA, which would give the authority of the Board to determine where the 911 center is with a 90-day notice to terminate the agreement that we have with Kit Carson on our location. And I believe that the language in here meets the requirements of our lease, and that's all it does. But it does not give the authority to move that except to the authority itself, and not to the county, not to the town, not to the Ski Valley, not to the Village of Questa. So that's the other one there, and then there's another provision in here, which is 7.1. Let's see if I find it. Did I skip it?
7.5.
There's a 4.1, which is a technical committee that is an advisory board to the regular Board. That was put in here just to have some technical people involved in the process, to give advice to the Board and not necessarily serve on the Board. Now, I'm trying to think, but there may be, I believe that's the only changes in this, the rest of this is boilerplate, that's information and stuff that's necessary in the JPA. So those are the four areas that we really need to discuss. I would like to propose at this time a couple of amendments. One first amendment is to take out the technical committee. I really don't think they're necessary, and if you look at the next amendment that I'll propose, which is similar to the Board of Directors makeup of the JPA from San Juan, this, they're in there as well, and they're not necessary, it's redundancy, and so I think that the technical committee should be amended out, and I would propose that amendment. Do you have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I can accept the amendment to remove the technical committee.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So Councilmember Peralta, we're going to go item by item, and then?
We'll go item by item, and then we'll decide what else we want to do, or?
Okay.
The next one is, I would like to amend the Board of Directors, and you have before you that amendment in a separate copy, and it's also in the email that was sent to you by Oscar yesterday, I believe, amended. What that amendment does?
Is that 2.1? Is that the 2.1?
Yes, two, section 2.1. That says that there will be seven members to the Board of Directors, of which the county would have two, the town would have two, the villages, Questa would have one, and the villages of Ski Valley would have one, to make up six members, and then they would appoint a member. The, to make up the seven, so that you have an odd-numbered board. The county would have two members, one, which would be from the public safety agencies that they would select, and then they would select one at large. The town would select one from the public service agencies, and then we would select one at large. The villages of Questa would have an at-large or one member from the public service entities, and the same with the Ski Valley, they would have one at large or public service entities. That would make up the six, and then the seventh would be made up from them, from one of the public service entities.
The Board itself?
The Board itself.
And if there's a tie?
And I feel that's a very evenly-weighted board that is there, and so that the, there would be an odd-number all times on the Board, but it would be represented by public service, and the public service is both fire and police, magistrates, municipal court, it could be state police, it could be any of those agencies that are out there available to us to be sitting on the Board. So if somebody felt that they want to have somebody outside of the entities that are part of this agreement, they could choose somebody to represent them from outside as well. And more than likely, that would be one of the at-large possibilities. But, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take that amendment and open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
I do have some issues with regards to the makeup of this amendment, and one of my big hang-ups on this is because the board members appointed at large would put us right back into the arena of putting another politician back on that Board. And again, I've solely based a lot of my decisions of getting the politics out of the E-911 response, so the at-large would mean that City Council could appoint a City Counselor, and County Commission could appoint a County Commissioner. And for me, I just, as much as we can get separated, the entanglement of the political entities and the power of plain politics, for me, would be probably one of the best options, so I don't think this is one, and I leave it to my fellow councilors to kind of speak on behalf of that as well, but for me, I don't, I don't think I could support that.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, so, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Peralta and Councilmember Gonzalez, a solution to that at-large is we could caveat and qualify that none of the seven board members appointed shall be elected officials.
That is an option.
Well, I guess the only other reservation I have, again, in the power of plain politics, is the board members appointed would still take direction from the council or county.
Regardless of who you put on the Board, they are going to take that direction.
Well, that's why.
One of the reasons for that, though, is because it's budget-driven.
So here's, and so there's, I mean, and we'll get to that, I think, in, under the taxing, but again, I think at some point in this JPA, there needs to be some language in the event of a future tax, because I don't foresee both government and agencies being able to bear the burden of dispatch in its capacity that it is right now, because I feel, even at the capacity it's at, it's severely underfunded.
There is a provision in here for the tax. However, it doesn't outline what happens specifically if the tax is put in place, and that would come in a separate discussion that we would have under another proposed JPA, but, and could be melded into this as well later on, but I think that if you wanted to pull as much as possible the potential politics out of this, I think that Councilmember Abeta's amendment to both of our amendments would be probably the best solution that I can think of, because we have to remember that the people who serve on this Board are basically our employees, and because of that, they are going to be taking direction from the elected bodies that they represent. And in a sense, I guess we've got to offer them the opportunity to be as objective as possible in what they represent to us, and we have to give them the authority to be as forthcoming as possible in their recommendations to us as far as what is necessary to operate, and keep us informed and out of the arena of trying to manage what's going on over there, and just strictly work on the budgets necessary to make this thing happen.
So Councilmember Peralta and Gonzalez, I think along the lines of Councilmember Abeta, the intent, I believe, is to not have a elected official of the respective governing bodies to this JPA. The problem with having abroad no elected officials, period, would eliminate the DA, would eliminate the sheriff from serving, and I think that they would warrant that they would, should have the ability to serve on this.
Mr. Mayor.
The one thing I guess I have with regards to that also, Mr. Mayor, is the fact that, I mean, given the makeup of the way it is now, would still leave itself open to the dirty political game, I guess you could say, with regards to individuals that are listed in here right now, their budgets are controlled by either one of the government governing agencies, and, I mean, we haven't seen it yet, but, I mean, this is town's politics, and to not say that it couldn't happen is that in the event that, let's just say, the county, you know, full-out says it's about a move, and with regards to the makeup of the Board the way it sits now, those decisions could be controlled through budgetary implications. So for me, I would rather see a board makeup of individuals, elected or not, that control their own budgets, DA's office, Sheriff's Department, to where there is no outside political influence whatsoever.
By the way, Mr. Mayor, if I could, the Sheriff's Department does not control its own budget.
So, well, and again, so for me, it's about the individuals that do have the ability to control their own budget without taking repercussions for not voting the way one political entity feels is the right way.
Councilmember Silva?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under 2.2 in that paragraph, the last sentence says, "The six directors named herein shall appoint seven directors from one of the above public safety agencies above." So I think this has already been thought out, and I don't have a problem with that. So I don't see where politics will come into play, given the list that we have.
Well, if you have our municipal police department or police chief on there, the problem that I have with that is that the outside influences could still play a factor in there in that should one agency not choose to play ball on the other agency's behalf, budget constrictions could come into play, in saying, "Well, it's not the way I wanted it to go, I'll take it out on you with your budget."
But you're going to have influences, no matter what, across the Board.
I just beg to differ with that, just because of the fact that if you're controlling your own budget, nobody can tell you what to do with it, and you are not held hostage with your budget in that circumstance of not voting the way one entity wants you to vote.
So I think?
What, I guess, if I could, Mr. Mayor, to interject here, Councilmember Gonzalez, the issue is that I don't think there's that many agencies out there that control their own budget, and particularly when you're talking about the municipal members of this Board, unless we are going to appoint the DA and the, I don't know who else, state police, but, you know, that's only two, so what happens with Questa and Ski Valley, who do they appoint? We've run out of non, because in the county side, you could say, well, they could do the magistrate We've run out of non, because in the county side, you could say, well, they could do the magistrate court person and, well, sheriff, they control that budget, so you can't go there. I don't, I don't know, I just, there's not that many entities out there that would be sufficient to be on the board. And, and yet, they aren't necessarily directly involved with the operations and the need of the operations. So there, there's a certain amount of, of reality here that you want to have, you know, the police chief, the fire chief, the sheriff's department, if you can, or their public safety people. Because they're the ones that are out on the street and they need to help try to get a budget that is understandable to, for them to properly do their job and then bring it to, to the entities to try to come up with a budget that makes that work. One of the strongest things, and Oscar mentioned this earlier, that we have to really understand and move forward with, and that's having a director over there who can see and work with the entities to make sure that we are doing the proper job and come forward with a budget that makes it work. And that's their, that's his or her responsibility when they're in there is to see, here's what needs to be done the best we can, and here's what it's going to cost, and then try to, try to make that match. Now, the problem that we have right now, and until there is a source of revenue that is independent of our budgets, is that all of this is going to depend upon what is available for us to provide for these services. Now, I, I realize this, that that is our, one of our number-one responsibilities to take care of, but it's still within the budget process. And, you know, we've got a, a large number of things that we have to take care of and be responsible for. And, and that, that puts some constraints on this. But I, I really think it's, it's kind of difficult not to have these people in there and on the board. And there is going to be a certain amount of possibility that for some reason, if somebody is crossways with, with another party, that there could be influences upon the board members by their public body to do things a little bit differently. But I think that, I feel anyway, that we all have the best interest of our constituents at heart. And I don't think that we're going to necessarily get into that kind of a, a fight in the future if we have a, a very balanced board. And I think that this is, this is what we're trying to do. But, you know, that's, that's from my perspective.
Councilmember, I, I can understand where you're coming from. I think what I'm hearing from councilmember Gonzalez is clearly we're in a predicament because of that. And really, we have a joint powers agreement, that's really not a joint powers agreement. Because when I hear joint powers, it's exactly that jointly, all entities have the power. And the current JPA that we have now, the power lies within the town and we want to get out of that. And I think everybody wants to get out of that. And you're absolutely correct that a director would eliminate a lot of the political thing because the employees, when they have an issue, they're subject to the political, that's the next person in line. Because we don't have a director that understands fully what's going on operational, that can advise the board or can advise. We're, we're up here basically blind trying to address their concerns because they don't have that first person that really can, you know, implement certain things. So, so I think that having a director is going to really, really reel in a lot of the politics because her, his or her responsibility is the best operational stance. I think that the, appointing someone to the board, each entity is going to want that somewhat of influence to make sure that budgetary concerns and it's operated to the best of the ability. But I, what I'm hearing is weighted voting and how can we eliminate the possibility of any weighted voting? Because what I've heard from commission meetings is they want voting that's weighted towards the, the county. I think this has to be under the county's control, so to speak, as far as globally. But the decisions have to, I, I don't agree that they should be weighted. Because then you could have, it gets right back to the predicament that we're in now. So how do we effectively do that through a composure of the, of the board? How do we make up a board that we're assured that we're not going to, that this thing will live on for thirty, forty, fifty years? I think that's, that's the intent. So.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, that's, that's ideal.
Sure.
And what we have to come up with is something that, that tries to get us as close as we possibly can to get to that ideal makeup.
Sure.
But it's, it's difficult.
Sure.
And, and I think that one of the things we have to look at too is that what we're seeing today, if, if we can come up with something, maybe we can change attitudes and positions to be more amenable to each other. And, and that's kind of what we have to look at too, is saying, we have to be a little bit optimistic that if we do something, then maybe we can change people's minds a little bit about what, where we've set ourselves and, and, and make it work. But, you know, I, I don't know, you know, I'm not perfect, I wish I was. And, and all of us do that. But I think what we have to do is try to see if we can't come up with something. And, and I guess maybe one of the things I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, is I'd like to go back to councilmembers Gonzalez and see if he's come up with some, some ideas in our discussion now that, that we can transform into this and see if that works.
And to, to this council's credit, I just, you know, I want to reiterate that we do have a, a JPA that gives us all control and we don't want that. Because we understand that doesn't work for, for 911. And what I'm hearing from the council, I had the opportunity to review the last commission meeting. There is, a commissioner made a, an adamant comment that there's a three-to-two vote to move to the planning building. So, you know, I think we want to enter this JPA, but we also have to realize there's a three-to-two vote on the commission that wants to go on their own. And what, how does that play into all of this as well? So, Marty, you wanted to comment on something?
Yes, if I may.
Sure, if you could come up here just.
I would just like to say that in no way do I want to influence anybody anyway, but I've kind of been through all of this. I started in ninety-nine and Ruriva County being very political, just as it is here, we are run by a board. So everything that Mr. Peralta is, is telling you, and, and you're correct in, in so many things as well, is, is accurate. Appointing these people and getting a board that works. So we've had, we've been without a quarter percent tax the majority of the time. It's just been the last six years that now we have that quarter percent tax. Before, we had a board that we had two members from the county, two members from the city. And it, usually they're based on call volume, how, how many calls you get per agency. That wasn't how the county wanted to do it. The county wanted to have the same amount of votes as the city. The city in Espanola being the highest call volume getter. So the city then decided, well, you know, we should be the highest one. The county wanted to be the highest one, therefore they both had two votes on the board. Then you had other entities that only had one. But each one paid, instead of putting a number on, on any JPA because it's change, it can change, we had a forty-five percent each one paid in. And then from there, you broke down the rest of the entities, what they paid in. What you had was sanctions. If the county, say for example, didn't pay their portion, then they weren't allowed to vote at the board meeting or they had to pay a late fee. So, so, so there was things that upheld what the voting members were able to do. The other thing that really helped us a lot was that these, these board members, before we had chief of police, we had the sheriffs. But as you said earlier, the stuff that was discussed at these stakeholders meeting wasn't getting back to the governing body. Therefore now, we do have the city manager on the board who can make a decision, who can say, "No. When I give a budget recommendation, they can stop me right away and say, 'No.'" We have a commissioner from the county who also is, can, has, has teeth, can say yes or no. Instead of, we had the emergency manager on our board or the, the fire, fire chief. They couldn't make those decisions. And then it seemed like nothing would get done. And, and I'd be spinning my head trying to get a hold of the managers on both sides, the city manager or the county manager, to see was our budget approved, did anything get done? So when you have people on the board, and, and I know you say about politics, it, it seems like it doesn't matter there whoever's on the board. But if you have a strong structure and, and they can, they can, they can, you have someone that has power on that board, then a whole lot gets done, a, a lot easier. And you're right about, about, about having a director, that is very imperative because that's who's the goal between, between everybody. Shift supervisors, like you have two now, they have to, there's, there's pillars, there's, there's levels. And you have to have all that in place. But, you know, we have had a joint power agreement that maybe you want to look at that wasn't based on a quarter percent tax and it was based on everybody paying in and then those late things and, and a way to keep things fair, as fair as you can. Because like you said, it's all about public safety and this isn't a place where you can skimp. This is where you have to provide the services that you need.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, in this JPA is if you don't pay, you don't play. So your, your, your rights get cut off until you get current. And that's in here, so.
And they get angry when they, when they can't vote. And, and you have to be strong and say, "No, you can't," because then decisions get made and, you know. But, so, yeah, that is right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to type that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's tough.
And Mr. Mayor and members of the council too, is that once the, the, the first two years after the MOU basically is, ends, the authority then has the responsibility to, to come up with a budget and the breakdown to the entities is to their share. So that's not in here, there's no, it's going to be forty-five, forty-five or anything like that, that's not in this one. So it's totally up to the authority board to determine how everybody's going to play. If it's going to be fifty-fifty on the two big players and whatever, that, that's going to be left up to them and, and to be done. So just, I, I forgot to mention that earlier.
Mr. Mayor, I think for me, and again, this is strictly just for me, I tend to lean more heavily towards the makeup of the San Juan Board of Directors. And I, and I say that with regards to the fact that section 2.0 and 5.0 of this JPA just sit too dang close together.
Okay, did you want to put that in form of an amendment?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just discuss that for a second. One of the, the issues that I have with that is that the county membership on the board is, is two people. One, it's a fire chief and the other one is a public criminal justice system person, pure and simple. The city of Farmington, however, gets to do a criminal justice person and then they have an at-large position. I, I don't know that that's necessarily fair, that one entity has an at-large position and the other one doesn't get one who has the same number of votes. And that's the reason that, that I made up my amendment the way I did. It was to give both party, all the parties the ability to have that, that option in there. Which is a real strange thing, I thought, that, that was in the JPA for, for San Juan County.
And for me, Mr. Mayor, it's just that at-large. I mean, I could, I could deal with probably ninety-five percent of the way councilmember Peralta has his BOD set up. But for me, it's that at-large.
I mean, one of the things we could go to, Mr. Mayor, if you, if you wanted to, is that if, if the county has to be basically criminal justice and then fire chief or, in other words, both of them have to be from public safety positions, then we, I would say for all the entities, their choices have to be from public safety positions.
And I would more be amenable to that because of the fact that those are the players involved.
So, so am I hearing that rather than the town of Tlaloc shall appoint two directors, one shall be a full-time employee of criminal justice and the other one should be an at-large? Shall we then place who the town of Tlaloc?
No, I'm just saying that, that the, the membership of the board would be from the list of, of public safety agencies that I've put in there. And the same thing with the county and the same thing with Ski Valley and, and the village of Cuesta, they would have to pull from that list.
So under section 2.2 of the San Juan JPA, just mirror the county's appointments and that they should be from a criminal justice agency and a volunteer fire department, the town should be the same?
Well, in, in our case, those are the only two that would be public safety people. In the area of, of, of the county, they could be anybody in that, in that group. It could be the sheriff, it could be from the DA's office, it could be from the magistrate court. You know, they have that whole list of different agencies that fall into the county. But if the municipalities wanted to pick somebody who was from their entities, then it's a little more restricted. But that's fine, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying that's the understanding is that the, the county has a little more leeway as far as the agencies that, that they have in public safety according to, I mean, criminal justice according to the list that you have from San Juan.
Because, you know, under, if we mirror that, the town could very well pick the police chief and the fire chief. And I think those would be probably the best to represent us on that board.
And probably what we would do anyway.
Sure.
But here's the idea, one of the things that, that's not in the San Juan version of, they only look at criminal justice people. They don't look at their fire departments, they don't look at the fire departments from any of the entities either. And what I did in mine is I put those in there to say, you know, why should it be one-sided? One of the concerns and complaints that I think we had from our fire department is that being set up in, the, I mean, the dispatch center being set up in the police department is it was controlled by the police department and they were, felt like second-class citizens to that entity. And one of the things that I looked at in looking at the makeup of, of the board or where the representatives of the board could come from for San Juan County, it almost gave that same sort of leaning, I guess is the best way to put it, towards, towards the police and, and criminal justice rather than being a balanced board. And what I tried to do is, is try to balance that and say that, you know, all the entities, it could be the ambulance service, it could be any number of things that you could have in there that, that would allow for a little more balance in, in the entities, being representative on the board. So, Mr. Mayor, if, if I could, what I would look at is saying, and what I think councilmember Gonzalez is, is saying is that the membership on the, on the, on the board would be from public safety. And the county can decide which two public safety people they want, the town would decide, Ski Valley would decide their one and the village of Cuesta would decide their one. But it would have to be from, from that list of entities.
As in the San Juan model?
Yes.
With a little more positions in there.
Well, and with a little more positions.
So then should we put, shall be from public safety, including but not limited to this list of the San Juan?
Yeah, because of the fact that they have, you know, their city attorney's office or DA's office, district court, magistrate court, municipal court.
I think those are in my list as well, are they not, Oscar?
Uh, yeah, they are.
So I'm just saying is that you would just change the top and say they would have to be from the public safety list that I have. Because I changed the name from criminal justice in order to add those other agencies and just look at public safety agencies.
So are you, are you good with that?
I'm okay with that.
That amendment, entertain a motion accordingly?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we adopt section 2.1, which is the Board of Directors, and remove the language of membership at-large and have it reflect those from the public safety entity.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Oscar, do you guys have that direction?
So, to be absolutely sure so that our clerk can follow us, so in essence, the.
Brian, do you have, do you, do you understand what the motion was?
The amendment that was circulated.
You'll, you'll be drafting this, so.
I know, I know, I got it, I'm following along, believe it or no. Mr. Mayor had a lot of coffee this morning, anytime council wants to take a break would be appreciated over here.
Let's go, go through these amendments and then we'll look at the, the other one that staff has prepared as well.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I could, those are the only amendments that I had to this JPA. If there's others that the council would like to consider, I'd be more than happy to discuss those.
Is there any other, any other mem? That took care of the weighted voting concerns that you.
Say that, Mayor.
That took care of the weighted voting concerns that you had?
I believe there's no weighted voting, that's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, with regards to section 5.0, I don't know, I mean, that, that can be a pretty decent-sized conversation. So I don't know if we want to take a short recess for five minutes. minutes and allow our attorney to...
Pick flowers.
Pick flowers.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with this, we basically got rid of the weighted voting. We still have weight over these guys.
Get out. She was just in power for a second.
[inaudible]
Mr. Mayor, if I could, what I would look at is saying, and what I think Councilmember Gonzalez is saying, is that the membership on the board would be from public safety. And the county can decide which two public safety people they want, the town would decide, Ski Valley would decide their one, and Village of Cuesta would decide their one. But it would have to be from that list of entities.
As in the San Juan model?
Yes.
With a little more positions in there.
Well, and with a little more positions.
So then should we put, shall be from public safety, including but not limited to this list of the San Juan?
Yeah, because of the fact that they have, you know, their city attorney's office or DA's office, district court, magistrate court, municipal court.
I think those are in my list as well, are they not, Oscar?
Yeah, they are.
So I'm just saying is that you would just change the top and say they would have to be from the public safety list that I have. Because I changed the name from criminal justice in order to add those other agencies and just look at public safety agencies.
So are you good with that?
I'm okay with that.
That amendment? Entertain a motion accordingly?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we adopt Section 2.1, which is the Board of Directors, and remove the language of membership at large and have it reflect those from the public safety entity.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Oscar, do you guys have that direction?
Yes, sir. So, to be absolutely sure so that our clerk can follow us, so in essence, the...
Brian, do you understand what the motion was?
The amendment that was circulated...
You'll be drafting this, so.
I know, I know. I got it. I'm following along, believe it or no. Mr. Mayor had a lot of coffee this morning. Anytime, counsel, I want to take a break would be appreciated over here.
Okay. Let's go through these amendments and then we'll look at the other one that staff has prepared as well.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I could, those are the only amendments that I had to this JPA. If there's others that the council would like to consider, I'd be more than happy to discuss those.
Is there any other, any other mem... That took care of the weighted voting concerns that you...
Say that, Mayor.
That took care of the weighted voting concerns that you had?
I believe there's no weighted voting, that's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, with regards to Section 5.0, I don't know, I mean, that can be a pretty decent-sized conversation, so I don't know if we want to take a short recess for five minutes and allow our attorney to...
Pick flowers.
Pick flowers.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with this, we basically got rid of the weighted voting. We still have weight over these guys.
Get out. She was just in power for a second.
[inaudible]
Mr. Mayor, if I could, what I would look at is saying, and what I think Councilmember Gonzalez is saying, is that the membership on the board would be from public safety. And the county can decide which two public safety people they want, the town would decide, Ski Valley would decide their one, and Village of Cuesta would decide their one. But it would have to be from that list of entities.
As in the San Juan model?
Yes.
With a little more positions in there.
Well, and with a little more positions.
So then should we put, shall be from public safety, including but not limited to this list of the San Juan?
Yeah, because of the fact that they have, you know, their city attorney's office or DA's office, district court, magistrate court, municipal court.
I think those are in my list as well, are they not, Oscar?
Yeah, they are.
So I'm just saying is that you would just change the top and say they would have to be from the public safety list that I have. Because I changed the name from criminal justice in order to add those other agencies and just look at public safety agencies.
So are you good with that?
I'm okay with that.
That amendment? Entertain a motion accordingly?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we adopt Section 2.1, which is the Board of Directors, and remove the language of membership at large and have it reflect those from the public safety entity.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Oscar, do you guys have that direction?
Yes, sir. So, to be absolutely sure so that our clerk can follow us, so in essence, the...
Brian, do you understand what the motion was?
The amendment that was circulated...
You'll be drafting this, so.
I know, I know. I got it. I'm following along, believe it or no. Mr. Mayor had a lot of coffee this morning. Anytime, counsel, I want to take a break would be appreciated over here.
Okay. Let's go through these amendments and then we'll look at the other one that staff has prepared as well.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I could, those are the only amendments that I had to this JPA. If there's others that the council would like to consider, I'd be more than happy to discuss those.
Is there any other proposals or amendments?
Mr. Mayor, as I opened up my conversation, I think there's a possibility of two or three scenarios that would be acceptable to the council, and I think the way this one is amended now, it's acceptable. And I would like the council to consider sending two or three scenarios to the county to consider if they're acceptable ones. And I think this one and the next one that we'll be talking about are acceptable. They're just a slight little change in how they operate, but I would, at this time, call for a vote on this particular one.
I think we need a motion to, so I think what we're...
As amended.
Going to do is approve a couple of JPA's versions. This version being presented has, to the extent possible, the MOU implemented in it.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
The other...
With a couple of caveat.
With a couple of amendments. The other JPA's we'll be discussing will leave the implementation to the MOU to the board and will, it's going to be proposed as an exhibit, I understand. So I would entertain a motion to approve, as amended, so that we could submit this to the county as an option of a JPA.
So move.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Understanding also that this may not be approved by the county. I mean, we understand, you know, especially after I heard the DVD yesterday, I'm not sure where the votes are aligned, you know, to accept any MOU or any JPA that has, that's not weighted voting, so.
I think with regards to this, though, I think even with regards to the general public themselves, it shows a good faith effort on behalf of both sides to say, okay, enough of the politic game and this solely vets the interest of the emergency dispatch and the key players. So I would hope that that would be a process of consideration for the county commission as well.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I could, at this time, I don't know which one of the other three you'd like to take first. If you'd like to take the one that's very similar to the one we just passed, with its differences, we can do that and I would allow Councilmember Gonzalez to discuss that one. I believe he worked on that one. Or do you want to take the other two that I proposed?
Well, I think for me, Mr. Mayor, it would be, you know, not necessarily the one that Councilmember Peralta has because it still enlists the weighted voting, unless we're talking about the one that you're doing with the amendments that you proposed in there. I know we just approved one now that was, I think, completely separate of one that you had looked at with just a few minor tweaks. And then we have one that, you know, mimics identically to what you created.
The one we passed is the one that I created with amendments just now. The other one is the one that you created last week with moving the MOU into an exhibit rather than being a part of the actual operation. And you changed some budgetary items and that sort of thing. So we can take a look at that one as the next possible one to send to the county, or we can look at the other two options, which were the, basically, what I'm proposing is the San Juan JPA if a tax is passed, or the San Juan JPA if there is a weight on the budget.
And I think these were discussed in my meeting with Oscar and Brian one morning, looking at how do we, what are the options? And I think this is what we came up with in those meetings. So we have one approved JPA, and that is the one JPA that has been circulating for quite some time, implementing to the extent possible the MOU within, with the amendments. So in other words, they get all the candidates?
They get all the candidates, review applications when they've narrowed it down.
Are you narrowing, going back to your language, are you narrowing it down to three candidates, or at that point, there would be a secret ballot, or on all of them, there'd be a secret ballot, all candidates?
I would just say, let them pick one, I mean, I don't know, whatever their process may be, I mean, they may, I mean, I would seriously doubt that they'd have five candidates within the realms of, of emergency dispatch, but...
And I think whatever, uh, if we're the fiscal agent, or they're the fiscal agent, we'll have to follow whatever processes, HR processes, in this case, the town it has, or if the town, county becomes a fiscal agent, then they would have to follow whatever hiring process, and to the extent possible, I'm not sure how we can make the anonymous, uh, as far as public records, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think that, that would work, I'm not sure.
Well, would you have to disclose?
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I, I think you hit the nail right on the head, I think it has to be based on whoever the fiscal agent is, but also, I think, giving, um, this authority to that board, at their discretion, figure out a process within themselves of how to make this happen, I think anything we do now is...
If I could, one of the things that, that is in these JPAs is the authority has the right to hire, that person then becomes an employee of whoever the fiscal agent is, but they don't hire, and they don't fire directly, that's done by the authority, and that's, that's why you, you have it there, so that you take the politics out of it, it doesn't become, "My manager doesn't like this guy, and so, he's gone," no, the authority has to say, "He's gone," and then it's approved by the governing body that's the fiscal agent. So, that, that's, that's the important aspect of this, how that person is brought on board, I think, is more what Councilmember Gonzalez is talking about, and I don't know whether or not that can be a secret ballot or not, that, that could be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, in the sense that they're operating not according to, to everything being open and public, as far as the decision-making part of that, I, I, I don't know, I mean, maybe this is a question we, we should ask Brian.
Because I know that all the, if it's personnel matters, it could be an executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, but any action of a vote would, if it's, if this has to take place publicly.
That's my assumption, yes.
Yeah.
So I guess we would just leave that alone, unless I'm hearing otherwise from the attorney.
No, the secret ballot doesn't seem like that's gonna do the job with the Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
Well, I, I think, and I'd be okay with that too, Mr. Mayor, but just so that the, and much like Councilmember Peralta said, is that the authority has its sole discretion to choose the ED.
Yeah, and I think that's the intent, is it the board with that?
It is the content.
Okay, uh, the Councilmember Gonzalez, did you have something with five, or is that, was that the...
Well, I think it's, it's, it's taken care of by the makeup of the board, Mr. Mayor, so, no, I don't have any additional.
Okay, is there any other proposals, or amendments?
Mr. Mayor, as I opened up my conversation, I, I think there's a possibility of two or three scenarios that would be acceptable to the council, and I think the way this one is amended now, it's acceptable, and I would like the, the council to consider sending two or three scenarios to the county to consider, if they're acceptable ones, and I think this one and the next one that we'll be talking about are acceptable, they're just a slight little change in what, how they operate, but I would, at this time, call for a vote on this particular one.
Uh, I think we need a motion to, so, I think what we're, we're...
As amended.
Going to do is approve a couple of JPAs versions, this version being presented has, to the extent possible, the MOU implemented in it.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
The other...
With, with a couple of caveats.
With a couple of amendments, the other JPAs we'll be discussing will leave the implementation to the MOU to the board, and will, it's gonna be proposed as an exhibit, I understand, so, I would entertain a motion to approve, as amended, so that we could submit this to the county as an option of a JPA.
So move.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, understanding also that, uh, this may not be approved by the county, I mean, we, we, we understand, uh, you know, especially after I heard the, the DVD yesterday, I'm not sure where the votes are aligned, you know, to, to accept any MOU, or any JPA that has, that's not weighted voting, so...
I think with regards to this, though, I think even with regards to the general public themselves, it shows a good faith effort on behalf of both sides to say, "Okay, enough of the politic game, and this solely vets the interest of, of the emergency dispatch and the key players," so I would hope that, that that would be a process of consideration for the, the County Commission as well.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I could, at this time, I, I don't know which one of the other three you'd like to take first, if you'd like to take the one that's very similar to the one we just passed, with its differences, we can do that, and I would allow Councilmember Gonzalez to discuss that one, I believe he worked on that one, or do you want to take the other two that I proposed?
Well, I, I think for me, Mr. Mayor, it would be, you know, not necessarily the one that Councilmember Peralta has, because it still enlists the weighted voting, unless we're talking about the one that you're doing with the amendments that you proposed in there, I know we just approved one now that was, I think, completely separate of one that you had looked at with just a few minor tweaks, and then we have one that, you know, mimics identically to what you created.
The one we passed is the one that I created with amendments, just now, the other one is the one that, that you created last week with moving the MOU into an exhibit rather than being a part of the actual operation, and you changed some budgetary items and that sort of thing, so, we can take a look at that one as the next possible one to send to the county, or we can look at the other two options, which were, uh, the, basically, what I'm proposing is the San Juan JPA, if a tax is passed, or the San Juan JPA, if, if there is a, a weight on the, on the budget.
And I, I think these were discussed in my meeting with Oscar and Brian one morning, looking at how do we, what are the options, and I think this is what we came up with in those, those meetings, so, um, so we have one approved JPA, and that is the one JPA that has been circulating for quite some time, implementing to the extent possible the MOU within, with the amendments, so that's one that's gonna be going, now, as far as, we have a lot of paperwork in front of us, which one are we looking at, let's, let's just go to the next one.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could, the next one is, is the one that talks about the MOU being in the, in exhibit, and there's, and there's a couple of other things in there that are budget changes and that sort of thing, so, um, I would suggest that Councilmember Gonzalez discuss that one, since he, he's the one that worked on that, and then we can, we can discuss it and, and see if there's any recommended changes, the only recommendation that I would have there is that the makeup of the board reflect the amendment we made to, to the previous JPA, so there's a consistency as far as the board is concerned, 'cause I think that, there isn't any other way that we can construct a board any differently that would work.
Okay, so, so which one's which, the first, I got two of them here, they start off identically.
Maybe I can help, Mr. Mayor, first of all, if the council agrees that no matter which JPA it is, we're gonna use the board you just approved, that's common to all three of the remaining ones?
Correct, okay.
The three remaining ones are essentially the modified San Juan JPA with the board, modified board you just agreed to, and the only differences are, um, whether the MOU is gonna be attached as an exhibit, and, or tried to be incorporated within, within the body of it, and then we have, for the first year, a fifty-three, forty-three, two and two split on cost, uh, one of those is with the tax language included in the JPA, one is without, and then last but not least, is the infamous seventy-five, twenty-five, which substantially changes the board after the first year, if the county were to assume seventy-five percent of the costs, and they would name all seven of the board members, so those are essentially the, the agreements that you have to decide, if we consider them all in light of the modification of the board, there's really only two that you have to decide, one is whether you want the fifty-three, forty-three, two and two with the tax language, or the fifty-three, forty-three, two and two without the tax language.
Okay, so, so let's, let's talk, let's, let's do the one without the tax language, I think this is, the intent is to get to the point where we have a tax that nine-one-one, an ambulance takes care of itself, in this environment now, that would never pass, so I think the commission and this council is not positioned to even ask our voters to implement a tax, but I think this is a starting point, we, we set the foundation that in the future, uh, it's there, so if we're talking about the one that doesn't have the tax language in there, what, what does that mean?
What it would mean, Mr. Mayor, if I could, is that, at some point in the future, we would have to come back and amend it to allow for the tax to be done, and, and how that works, with the tax language in there, as I understand it, then all it does is says that in the future, the tax can be imposed if the county is willing to do a referendum to the voters to impose the tax.
And this is similar to what San Juan has, Río Riba, so I think we need to have the, the tax language in there, because that's where we, we wanna be.
Well, and if I could, and if I could just finish it up, Mr. Mayor, if I could, is that, in the language in these JPAs is the authority to amend, so if, if the tax were to pass, then the authority could get together and amend the JPA with approval of the entities, how that would then transform or trans, or change the makeup of, of the JPA, to allow for the tax to become then the sole source, basically, of the operations of, of the JPA, maybe with a caveat that, that's in the San Juan language, it says, "If, if there's not enough money in that tax, then this will go back to the entities in a certain..."
Portions.
Certain proportion, but that could be terminated later day to not have to be in there now, the San Juan version, because the tax is in place in their JPA, they already say it's gonna be forty-three, forty-three, six and six, so, we can leave that out, because the entity has the authority to determine that when a tax would be passed, so, I think there's enough general language in there to help with that, and, uh, so, I, I think we should discuss the version with the tax, they don't have to impose it, they, you know, it's strictly the county and the authority and the entities to make a determination as to whether they wanna go that route sometime in the future, and this just gives that discussion of possibility with that language in there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I think, for purpose of, of the direction that we're going with this, I would consider to amend, um, the board of directors to mimic the last JPA that we just approved, so that we still leave the, the public, um, safety entities involved in the decision-making, um, and also with regards to the tax language, I mean, putting a tax language in there so that the authority, should the time and place ever come, to make that petition to the County Commission to increase, or to impose a tax.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before we get there, I'd like to make a motion to, to put this JPA on, on discussion, and available for amendment.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, just, uh, just so that we understand, the version that we just approved prior to this discussion does have a mention of the tax as well?
Yes, it does.
I think...
I just wanna make it really clear, though, that this council is not looking to tax at this time, it's just language that is in there, because I know that I heard, uh, before, that the reason why the commission wasn't willing to work with us is because we wanted to tax our constituents, I heard that, it's been a while, but I wanna make it very clear that, while it is in the language in the JPA, it's an option, and we're not looking at exercising that option at this time.
Mr. Mayor, that, that language has been, uh, the same in the agreement we just passed, and it's essentially the same in the San Juan agreement, I add language, added language, it says, "If there is a tax," none of them request a tax, and the only reason I'm, the attorney's office would be recommending incorporating any JPA that references the taxing authority, is not that this process hasn't been fun, but I don't know that I wanna do it again, in the event that we have a GRT imposed.
I can, I agree, Mr. Mayor.
So, is it the, uh, consensus of this council that we want language in the, so let's eliminate this JPA then, that we're talking, the JPA that doesn't reference the tax?
No, the one that does not reference the tax.
So, so we wanna eliminate that, so there are motions to eliminate this JPA and go on to the next one.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, the, the motion on the floor right now, that is, I believe, is the JPA with the tax.
With the tax.
So, we need to finish this one first, and then we can go...
And then eliminate the next one.
We don't have to eliminate, we don't even have to discuss it, 'cause it's not on the floor.
I, I believe we, we were discussing the one without the tax, and what does that mean?
I think it was the one with the tax, I mean, we'll just take, we'll take off the floor...
The motion I made, and, and the second was for the JPA with the tax.
Okay, so we're discussing that one, so what...
And we won't discuss at all, the one without.
Okay, then let's entertain a motion to, is that the only amendments that we have to this, San Juan model, that basically mirrors the same board of directors?
I think it mimics the same board of directors, Mr. Mayor, and then also, just with regards to, should there be budget, um, shortfalls with the tax in place, what entities, and how that is distributed.
And the budget to begin with starts at fifty-three, forty-three?
That's correct.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, is everybody okay with, with that, as an option, JPA?
I'm okay with that, Mr. Mayor, uh, so, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, this joint powers agreement with, with those amendments, which is restructuring the board of directors to mimic the JPA in which it's all public safety-driven, and with regards to the budget at a fifty-three, forty-three.
Okay, there's a motion, a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, uh, next, which, which one are we gonna discuss at this time?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to withdraw my, uh, JPA concerning the tax, I don't feel that, at this point in time, it's gonna be relevant to discuss, since it's, nobody wants to, however, the, the third one that, that I had was, basically, giving the county the authority over the E-nine-one-one center, based on the San Juan JPA, with the change that the budget would be seventy-five, twenty-five, uh, that's...
Before, before we go there, this, the, uh, JPA that we just approved, I believe had the MOU as an attachment, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so that leaves the MOU in place, with the authority, with, with the board, the new board to come in, to implement whatever part of the MOU they can.
Yes, wish them the very best of luck with that.
Yeah, this, this MOU has been a clear nightmare, and, I mean, it's obvious that...
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so, so just for clarification, this...
Was it set up as an attachment, or as an exhibit?
Exhibit, exhibit.
Or an appendix?
It's an exhibit, according to what we just approved.
If it's on there as an exhibit, Mr. Mayor, I don't think there would be any, um, ability for any implication, 'cause it's on there as strictly exhibit, I think it would probably have to go on as an attachment, or an appendix, correct, Brian?
Well, I don't care, pick one.
If I, if I could, interject here, just a little bit, is that the language within the JPA says that the, the authority will have the, shall have the right to implement the MOU.
And I'm good with that, because that, yeah.
I'm perfectly good with that.
Okay, so, that's all I understand, that the MOU is in that...
And so, as an exhibit, it works fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, um, go ahead, proceed.
Okay, basically, what I had for, for the council to consider is, is offering to the county, and we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, and that would be that the county would get the, the JPA, the San Juan JPA version, I guess, maybe with a change to the board makeup, but, uh, for a seventy-five, twenty-five split, they would have full authority, they would become the fiscal agent, they would do the hiring, the firing, they would hire, and, and they would control what the budget is going to be, and, and the location, and all of that stuff, in exchange for a very hefty budget requirement on their side. In order for that to happen, though, there's a couple of things, there would have to be a new MOU, which is just an understanding as to, as to how that would be implemented, and that would be that the, the county would, we would, uh, do away with the current MOU, the, the new MOU would give them the authority to determine location, to determine the budget, to be the fiscal agent, it would give them determination to the location, uh, and, in those things, though, there would be a couple of things, one is if they wanna move, it would be their sole cost, if they become the, uh, the, transfer the employees to them, they would have to hold us harmless on that transfer of those employees and their rights, uh, and that's basically it, and that would go on indefinitely.
The only, uh, my view of that is, it gets us right back to where we're at today, one entity controlling, and I know that this will be a nightmare, I know, then, it's not really a joint powers agreement, because it's just, you know, I think it gets us back to the predicament, that's just my opinion, so...
The only reason for this, Mr. Mayor, is that if, if, if that would be, you know, something that the, the county would wanna do is be the, the total whipping boy for every, all the entities, we could give them that opportunity.
Councilmembers?
Well, I think also the, holding us harmless with any liability that we have now with Kit Carson.
Any other comments, questions, does anyone wanna entertain that, uh, I guess the, the concern that I have on that is that, it's very clear that the County, County Commission, in my opinion, is so politically entrenched in this, I, I believe that if the current location didn't have Kit Carson Electric on, or any relation, we wouldn't even be having this discussion, um, by doing this, it's clear that the county, or they may be doing it anyway, it gives them more of a green light to spend over two million dollars in a new facility that would be just duplicating services, so, while I think it's a good deal for the town budget-wise, for the constituents, I don't think it's, it's a good deal, because that's taxpayer money that's gonna go there, and then we lose, well, we, we, we still end up, uh, it's just forcing an investment or solidifying an investment, and I don't think that we need to go down that road, that money could be used for much better uses, uh...
Mr. Mayor.
In my opinion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could, before we get to Councilmember Gonzalez, and that is, um, I, I guess it was important that, that an offer was made to the county, and I felt that it was proper for the council to consider that, as to whether or not they wanted to formally do that or not, and, and that's the reason I'm bringing it forward, because it, it is something that's hanging out there, and I think we do, we need to do something with it, either get rid of it, or implement it in some way that we feel that it's, uh, it's a reasonable offer, but, that's, that's the only reason I'm bringing it forward, because I think it's something that we should formally act on.
And I think that, where this was born was through our attorney, in frustration...
I agree, but I still think it's, it's something that we should take into consideration.
And I, I, I know that kinda raised some, um, some eyebrows, as far as the county, well, maybe we should consider that, but I, I guess I didn't get that just from the last commission meeting, that there was support on the commission to...
I didn't get that idea either, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't, I didn't get that there was support, I think, maybe, in an attempt to, well, how do we get to the MOU in any fashion, that may be, that may have been a way, but I don't think it was received very well with the County Commission, I think, matter of fact, I think they were kind of offended, uh, that that was even thrown around there, so, I, I don't, um, I don't know if we wanna, I mean, I don't like the, uh, the fact that we're just reversing roles that the town, but it gets us back into a JPA that all of us don't like, and, and that is where one entity is controlling, so...
Mr. Mayor, if we, if we wanna send them three JPAs, why don't we send the two that we've approved, and, as opposed to that seventy-five, twenty-five, send them the San Juan model in its entirety?
So I think, if we don't wanna send this, then we just, um, let's not even entertain this one, if that's, if that's the wishes...
I'm, I'm okay with not entertaining this.
And just to answer your comment, and that is, the San Juan model is imposing tax.
Yeah, so, so, and we don't have to send them three.
Send them two.
No, let's send them the two, and that's...
Yeah, we could send them two, so, is, I would entertain a motion that we not send the, this last version, seventy-five, twenty-five.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, so, that leaves us to, in order to simplify, the last thing I'd, I'd hate to do is send the commission what we have in front of us here, so many different things to digest, I, I would think that, um, we have two JPAs that I think the council can live with, uh, unless staff, do you have any other concerns with...
No, sir, those, what you discuss here, we can live with, it'll work.
Okay, uh, then I would entertain a motion that we send the two approved JPAs, thank you, Councilmember Peralta.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, we hope that this gets us one step closer, we, um, we're hoping that, I believe that this, this truly gets nine-one-one into a neutral playing field, and, um, and we can really give it the attention that it needs, now, as far as item B, the intention...
Mr. Mayor. Just, just, um, to be sure here, so, we will deliver this, as soon as, we'll get to work on it right away after this meeting, and we'll deliver it to the chairman, not through the staff, I would recommend, so that, you know, it's not viewed as sort of something that, that's gonna be negotiated now, again, with the lawyers, et cetera, but it goes straight to the chairman, addressing all of the commissioners, and that's the council's proposal to the chairman, not to the staff, not to be negotiated along the way.
And I would like to get direction from the staff to, uh, I would recommend that we no longer have the attorneys try to negotiate something as far as the MOU, how do we implement an MOU. This is the JPA, uh, that no further negotiations are going through. And I don't mean that in a bad context, rather, I just don't want that mixed message to, to be going, you know, through the staff, so.
Well, and, and, Mr. Mayor...
That's where it goes to the county chairman.
The chairman.
And, and I wholeheartedly support that just because of the fact that it doesn't appear that through staff, there's a whole lot of empowerment to make those decisions, so it just keeps, you know, falls in each other's court every other day.
And we're not sending mixed messages. We want to make sure that we're sending a clear, clear message.
Mr. Mayor, I, the, the town attorney and I felt totally empowered by you to...
Oh, yes.
Have made something work here. It's on the other side that there was not that, that empowerment, that they did not have the authority, and that's something that was repeated constantly. So, we thank you for the latitude that you gave us, and, uh, we also thank you for not sending us back into that arena again. I know I speak for the attorney.
I would like to point out that the, the 75-25 offer was not a result of some recent blow to the head that I've had. It was a result of, um, reaching an impasse with the county on some intractable issues regarding the employees and regarding, uh, moving the recently relocated dispatch center yet again. Um, council will recall that the, the mission for the attorneys was to reach an agreement that the attorneys could recommend. Um, it would, without taking a political position, just a common sense position, I was having difficulty trying to figure out how I was going to recommend any agreement that allowed automatically, uh, for a movement of a recently moved dispatch center. So, the, the cost skewing was the town's, my response, to trying to make the town whole for the money that we spent recently relocating the center, which we're totally empowered to do under the existing JPA, uh, in an effort to get into some kind of a posture where I could recommend the JPA that we were working on. So, there's a rationale for the 75-25, and that is it. It was certainly not designed to irritate the county commission, which I seem to have an almost natural ability to do.
And the, and the attorney checked that with me, and I said yes. So, we were together on this.
Okay. Um, on the, on item B, consideration of possible approval to rescind 13-14, uh, current joint powers agreement, we, and I think the council understands this real, uh, very clearly, uh, and I just want to make clear to, to the county and to the listening audience on, on the TV, is that the reason why we had this, uh, uh, resolution to terminate the current JPA is because no one liked it. And we've been working on this for over 10 years, uh, well over 10 years, and it seemed like there was no sense of urgency to, to start working and get serious on the, on the new JPA that obviously works for Rio Reba for, uh, for San Juan. So, that is the reason why we did this notice, so that would give us a year to enter into a new JPA. Obviously, that has not worked. Uh, we're still here trying to get a JPA. The intent was never to cut services to the county residents, or we're no longer going to dispatch. We know we're in this community together, and we have, the alternative of two dispatches, I mean, just a nightmare. It, it logistically doesn't make sense. Um, and financially, the intent of this was clearly to establish that sense of urgency to enter into a new JPA. Uh, since we're, uh, and, but I think the county has viewed that as, well, we have no choice now but to create a new dispatch facility because in March, we're no longer going to have services. At least I've heard that. I would like to take that urgency out of that, uh, so that the county knows that they're not forced to create another dispatch facility and rescind the, uh, that, uh, letter to terminate. I think that, um, we know that we're going to, you know, I, I would never say, okay, well, March 1st is coming along, sorry, you guys are on your own. Uh, it's clear that they wouldn't have a new, new dispatch facility by then anyway. And our intent here is, was never to split up. It was just to establish that sense of urgency to enter into a new JPA. So, I would, um, like the council to consider rescinding that, so that we...
So moved. I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. So, uh, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move...
I'd just like to thank you, Councilmember Peralta, for your work on this, on this issue. You've taken the lead on this issue. It's been a lot of meetings that I've attended alongside with you. Uh, Mayor Protem Gonzalez also worked, uh, in several meetings. I would like to see if we can get this off of our plate once and for all. And I think staff of the county want, whatever direction you go, I, I know you, you want to see this kind of off, off the table, so. And I think this is a good start, so.
I, I would just like to take, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just take advantage of the county, the county, some of the county staff being here, to invite the county manager, uh, to talk about this on a one-on-one basis, so that he can get the context, and I can just make myself available to any, any questions that he should have with any aspects of it, so that should the commission ask for a briefing on how it goes, that they would at least see, will have heard the, uh, the discussion here, as well as know the, the, the technical background, technical context behind each of the changes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Marty, thank you so much for, for being here. Do you have any comments? Well, wishes of good luck or something?
Good luck. Good that you, you got this out, because then you've got some other hurdles coming up. 911, next generation is going to hit you, text messaging is going to hit you. We're meeting all about that, and I will copy you on email to let you know what the second one would be and what you're up with. That's going to require more staff and a lot of, and more equipment.
Sure. I just want to thank you for all of your input and advice that you've given us. You've been, you've been super with us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Entertain a motion for a government?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you everyone.